Good evening, everyone. The March 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge Allegiance. Ms. Lacy will lead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's appropriate tonight, given all that's going on in the world, that we take just a moment of silence to reflect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. We now have a brief presentation of citations to the family of Ms. Former County Councilwoman Sarah Carter, Councilwoman Lacy, and I believe Pete Barron from the County Executive's office. If y'all want to head to the podium.
Pete Barron. Does anybody else want to join us from the family? Virginia? Any friends? Yeah, come on up.
I was there.
Please. So, tonight, we wanted to present a citation from the County Executive, and the council has a citation as well, to the family of Sarah Evelyn Carter. Today, we remember Sarah and her accomplishments. We remember her commitment to her church, her fellow parishioners, and her political activism. We recognize that she was a strong defender of human rights, which was evident in her eight years of service as the first black woman to sit on the Anarundel County Council. She's a woman of great integrity. Sarah was known as the people's person. She was a champion for the underdog and was a voice for those who had no representation in politics. Anarundel County is a better place because of the contributions that Sarah Evelyn Carter has made, and we are eternally thankful. She would have been 100 years old this year, so.
Should I go? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I have no idea how to talk to you this way into the mic. I'm trying like this, okay? But I have a citation to present to recognize a woman named Sarah, who spells her name with an H, because that is the way to spell Sarah, and is definitely a great name to have. So, the citation for the family of Councilwoman Sarah Evelyn Carter, who was born February 29th, 1920, and passed on January 20th, 1998. In celebration and recognition of her life, the Anarundel County Council today recognizes and celebrates the life of Sarah Evelyn Carter, the first African-American and one of the first women elected to the Anarundel County Council, a dedicated advocate for the citizens of District 3, which I understand is now, was included Brooklyn Park, which is actually part of District 1, which is my district, which is why I'm reading this to you now, and to the working people of Anarundel County, who worked tirelessly to improve the quality of life for all citizens of the county, in appreciation for her service to the citizens of the county, her family, and her church.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't know how to do this either, but anyway.
On behalf of my family, I want to thank the County Executive and members of the county council for honoring the memory of my mother, Sarah Evelyn Carter, in this important way. This citation is added to one from the Anarundel County Senate delegation of the Maryland General Assembly, and special thanks go to Virginia Claggett for shepherding this process at both the state and local level. We appreciate her efforts. In the early 1970s, Mom was a trailblazer, being one of the first three women elected to the council and the first African-American elected to the council, a record that stood for 30 years. She was a woman of integrity, who loved God, her family, her church, and her community, and served all of them well while she lived. I'm proud of the legacy she left to Anarundel County and am grateful that she is remembered.
And I'd like to introduce my sister, Andy Davis, who was her legislative aide back in the 70s, and Virginia, who was by her side.
Can I say one word?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, guys, this is a, this brings me back a long time, like, I can't tell you how many years. Or I should tell you. It was 1974, and I was maybe, what was I, 30 years old, and I had a child who's there, who is five years old, John Claggett, who ran with you guys, and a little girl who's three, and I simply ran with Sarah Carter and Ann Stockit, who is living in Harford County, I think. We were the first women, and your mom was the first African-American woman. We won. We won big time, and I think we changed a lot of things. So, thank you, and I love seeing all of you guys, who are doing a great job, and I want to say, it's very hard to be a county councilperson. I know my children answered the phone at the age of five and three. I don't know if you have children, but hopefully, we now have answering machines and so forth, which we didn't. But anyway, thank you for what you do, because no one realizes how many hours you put in to this job. So, thank you, and congratulations to you and Sarah and you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, it's exciting to hear the history, and it's also, as five of us, five women hold the supermajority currently on the county council, we stand on, we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us, so thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I actually do not have anyone signed up for this portion of our, but I will ask, oh, I see, I'll ask anyone who wishes to speak to come up now. This is your time to speak on something not printed on the agenda. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes, sir.
How does this thing work?
There you go.
Mrs. Chairperson, I'm Harry Sinclair Jr. from Crofton, 1170 Jeffrey Drive. I'm here this evening with basically two topics. One, and neither one of them seem to pass the common sense test. One is reference the tennis complex, and the other is forgiving the $700,000 of fines by the library. That just doesn't seem to establish any responsibility for our children, teenagers, and even the parents that should oversee their children, and when they got the book out and when it should be returned. All this is going to do, one, it reminds me of socialism, and, two, it, I don't think the county has that much money, I'm not sure, but $700,000 is quite a chunk of change. The second topic is the tennis complex, which, as I understand, the county's funded it by about $6 million, and all it's going to do is become a albatross. I hope I said that right. I, when I first heard this, drove around the county and saw tennis courts all over the place, and nobody playing tennis. So, I don't know why we need, what, six or eight more outdoor tennis courts. Even the facility itself doesn't pass the common sense test. Because, again, both the articles that were in the paper are from people either in, I'm sorry, in Davisville or Savardan Park, and if they want this thing, okay, it was in the Sunday paper, then let's put it in Davisville, let's put it in Savardan Park, rather than by a elementary school and off of, really, the beaten track, okay, when they want to have tournaments there. Now, as I understand, we already have problems at wherever that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I know. Even when they have problems down at the Renaissance Festival.
Sir, I really do have to ask you to finish your statement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll finish with, you know, that becomes a goat rope, and now we're going to put it on a cow trail. Makes no sense at all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, two minutes.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. This week, I sent you an email last Friday, I think it was, but before, you know, not 20 minutes before the hearing. I received, I sent in a request for some documents, specifically, what is the policy of the Health Department about granting waivers to the setback requirements? And some of you know I have been pestering this council for years, trying to find out what that policy is. And so, lo and behold, I received a reply, and I only have to pay $3 at 50 cents a page for the six pages of the policy. So, I thought you'd want to know that there is a policy, and for $6, or for $3, you can get a copy of each of the pages. You might be privileged, and you might be able to get it for free, because Ms. Schuett might provide it to you, but at any rate, or somebody else, because I think, it is a public record. The other issue is, though, why would it take so long and so many requests to obtain a copy of something that's a county policy? Seems to me that should be pretty elementary and should be pretty fast. The other thing that I included, and I included you in my reply to the lady from the county who sent me the email, that I also had requested copies of the applications for these variances for certain specific properties. So, if I'm really lucky, in 30 days, 90 days, three years, maybe someday I'll get those. But I thought you'd want to know, because I'm sure it's really exciting and thrilling for you. You have a great day. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
It's always nice to see Mr. Sinclair.
Good.
They're only glad to see me when I go out the door and leave.
I'm going to close the hearing on the invitation to audience at this time. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 18th, 2020.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Hare read a statement she wrote, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 18th, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the February 18th, 2020 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 1720, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, 911 Specialist Tax Credits. Bill Number 1820, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Public Safety Officer Tax Credits. Bill Number 1920, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Third Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriation. Bill Number 2020, An Ordinance Concerning Ethics, Conflicts of Interest. Bill Number 2120, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Use or Occupancy Tax, Licenses, and Registrations, Short-Term Rentals. Bill Number 2220, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Forest Conservation. Bill Number 2320, An Ordinance Concerning Farm Breweries and Wineries.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 920, Resolution Approving the Continued Service of Timothy McCullough as Acting Emergency Director. Resolution Number 1020, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Oppose Bills That Would Allow Counties to Create Tiered, excuse me, sorry, to Create Tiered Rates for Property and Income Taxes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 920 first this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 920 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 920.
Resolution Number 920, Resolution Approving the Continued Service of Timothy McCullough as Acting Emergency Director.
Thank you. This is an administration resolution. Mr. Barron, I'll have you introduce your panel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Acting Director Tim Mickles and from Office of Law, Greg Swain. Resolution 920 approves Chief Tim Mickles to continue serving as Acting Emergency Management Director through July 31st, 2020. We are in the process of interviewing. We have a pool of qualified people who have applied, and our interview committees have been selected, and we are beginning the process of interviewing for a permanent director. But in the meantime, we need to make sure that there's continuity, and the gentleman sitting to my right is fulfilling that role with extreme responsibility and professionalism. So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Mickles' daughter is in the audience.
Do I have any questions or comments? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 920.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 920 is adopted.
We're off to a good start. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 1020 second this evening?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion for a suspension of the rules to have a hearing and a vote on Resolution 1020 this evening.
Okay, a suspension of the rules needs a roll call vote?
Has to be a second, Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one of the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 1020 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1020.
Resolution Number 1020, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Oppose Bills That Would Allow Counties to Create Tiered Rates for Property and Income Taxes.
Mr. Volkey, this is your resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this bill pertains to some bills that are actually moving through at the state level. The reason that they are pertinent to the county is that if they pass at the state level, they will allow different taxing authority to the counties than is currently in existence. The county executive has made comments publicly that he would like to see some sort of a progressive tax structure created at the state level, so that then the counties are able to utilize that to tax incomes at different levels. Currently, we can only tax at one rate, and whatever you make, you're taxed at that rate. This would change that. This would also allow for different tax rates for different types of property. Again, currently, there's one rate, and it's across the board. So, it's my opinion that these things are not what we need in our county, that they are effectively just another way of trying to take more tax money out of folks' pockets. And so, for that reason, I would like to send a statement to the State House from this body to express our opinion on this legislation. I would add, for my colleagues' benefit, that Montgomery County Council actually took up these same two bills and took a position to oppose them. So, we are not exactly going it on our own. There's actually another jurisdiction that's already gone there. So, with that, I would ask for your support after we've had a chance to hear from the
But the administration, did the administration want to weigh in on this before we go to a public hearing?
Be happy to, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the County Executive. Joining me at the table from Office of Law is Greg Swain. So, since Councilman Volkey referenced the County Executive, let me talk exactly about the reasoning behind why the County Executive is supportive of these notions. This body took some brave steps in the last budget to make sure we have teachers, police, and fire. Many of the members, the majority of the members, voted for that. Others did not. The choices that were made made sure that we are closing the gap on our class size, reducing class sizes, closing the gap on our needs for police, fire, along with other needs. But when we did that, we had to raise the revenue to make that happen. And I will note that no one proposed enough cuts when faced with actually having to strike teachers or police officers from the budget to make that happen without revenue. So, we, we had to raise revenue, and it was a tough choice, and I know the County Executive did not like to do it. We talked about it a lot. It was not something that anybody wanted to do. But we have needs, we have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget, and we have to meet those needs. When we did that, we had to raise the rates so that a middle school teacher would pay the same tax rate as a millionaire. That is not right. Taxes used to be progressive back in, when the income tax was a true piggyback tax. It was piggybacked on the state's progressive tax rate, and so, for the benefit of, I know you all know this, but for the benefit of people who may be listening, a progressive tax rate is, as you move up the income, your rate is taxed at a different level. So, for example, if the first $10 was one rate and the next $10 was a higher rate, your first $10, you would pay the lower rate, and the next $10, you would pay the higher rate. So, even though you might pay your final tax rate, the number everybody would see would say, in Anarundel County, it's 2.81%. If we were able to have this authority, we would be able to perhaps provide a tax cut to folks at lower and middle income and raise the rate on millionaires. That would mean that the millionaire would still see the tax cut until they hit the threshold above that bracket. I hope I made that clear. If not, I'll bring charts next time. The last thing I'll say, and I'm interested in hearing from the public, that there were, there was recently a poll done by Goucher College, and whether or not we should tax progressively was on that poll. There were only a few other things that were more popular than Governor Hogan. Progressive taxation was one of them. So, I think it's, it's a little disingenuous to imply that the package of bills that's before the General Assembly on this subject automatically means raising taxes. This body would be the final fiscal authority and would have to take a vote on it. So, we have, we have a budget that will be coming down. We have lots of bills before us. I know Madam Chair and I have talked about just the amount of bills that deal with county business that we will need to address over the next couple of months. So, I would ask the council to reject this and allow us to focus on county business. Thank you.
Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues? Before we open the public hearing, I'll just take a minute. There are 68 local bills over at the delegation right now. There are over 2,600 bills that the state delegation is going through that legislative process. I'm going to be honest, I haven't really read many of them, because I was elected to represent the county council, and we and my colleagues are keeping our work quite, quite busy. So, I, my colleagues will also tell you that I have refrained from folks bringing both federal issues and state issues before this body for just that reason, so. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address from the record.
My name is Faith Loudon. Oh, excuse me. My name is Faith Loudon. I live in Pasadena, in the Lake Shore area. I'm a senior citizen. I can't believe that we're going to have more taxes. Senior citizens are on fixed incomes. What is, what are, what are our choices? Just to move out of the state? And my friends, and it just kills me, my friends are moving out. These are dear people to me, because they can't afford to stay in the state. My son just retired, and he's moved his residence to Florida. This, and the reason they all tell me, they all say, it's the taxes. It's the regulations, it's the taxes. There is no way in this world that you can't figure out a way to change your regulations, your bills, the things that you are doing now to, to run our education system, to run any department. There's always a way to, to cut and to make it easier and more palatable to, to us. There is no way that you can't tell me that you can't cut something. I know this education thing is a problem that we're about to be faced with, so this, we need to vote against this. We, I implore you to vote against this. The average income of Anarundel County is like, under, just under $100,000, and where is this progressive thing going to go? I, I think that we really need to think about how we spend our money, and especially how we tax our citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy?
Hi. Amy Leahy, I'm in Savardan Park, 712 Monmouth Avenue, and I am here representing myself as a taxpayer of this county and of this state. So, as Ms. Loudon was talking about, we have, the County Executive increased taxes last year. He went to the maximum level of what the, the tax, sorry, the tax cap is. So, we are also looking at this year, increased taxes at the state level for funding for Kerwin. There was a hearing held today where they will be taxing every service, it seems like, that we have going on. If you get a haircut, if you go to the barber shop, if you go to an accountant to get your taxes done, if you go to the car wash to get your car done, all of these services will be taxed now. And it's, I just don't know how much more of the people in this county can take. And Ms. Pickard, I know you said you were elected to represent the county council, but you're actually elected to represent your people that have put you in this office. So, every single one of you has constituents who really don't want to see taxes increased. This year, we also, and also, Mr. Barron commented that the county should not be involved in what the state's business is. However, the County Executive is the one that went to the Anarundel County delegation asking to have this progressive tax on our citizens in this county. And even though you may think that only the top people will be getting charged this, you know, this progressive tax that they this progressive tax, that they will be paying more, it's really going to hit the middle-income people. It's not going to be just the rich.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. I'm going to do a last call on this public hearing. Can we wait? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come up and speak on Resolution 1020? State your name and address for the record.
Again, Harry Sinclair Jr., 1170 Jeffrey Drive, Crossfield, Maryland. I really hate to agree with increasing taxes, but as long as we increase the taxes on these guys who make over $1 million, I don't see any problem with it. It just passes, if you really think about it, it just passes the common sense test. Now, I would hope we're not going to do it to people who make over, I'm sorry, less than $500,000. This is just going to be on the guys like Mike, what's his guy's name, Mike Blumenfall? Or was that his name? No. Whatever his name is. Anyhow, you know, it makes sense. We used to have progressive taxes, okay? And this was in the federal government. I don't know whether we had it at the state level or, I'm sorry, yeah, at the state level or county level. But it just, when you think about supposedly our children having so much problems with school for whatever reason, whether it be, we got to feed 50% of them because they can't buy lunch, and we've got 42 in a classroom, and whatever else. Oh, but we did put air conditioning in all these schools. You know, we didn't have that when I was a child. In fact, even my daughter didn't have it. And we both somehow managed to get through without air conditioner, and the schools only use nine months out of the year. Now, what common sense did that make? Think about it, okay? We're not there in June, well, June, July, August, September, but they all have air conditioning. So, when you talk about global warming, it was created by our children because we had to give them air conditioning. Their parents had to drive them to school because they don't ride the bus anymore. Think about how unintelligent we've been. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson?
Hi. Julie Johnson, P.O., about 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. It's always a joy to have Mr. Sinclair come and testify. He brings all kinds of interesting insights. But of course, there is a contingent of people who contend that it was the boomer generation that screwed up the planet, you know, from all the different kinds of things we did and didn't do, you know, with our parenting practices and, you know, anyway. You all understand that I am sort of a fiscal conservative because what I look at is, the wages have been stagnant for 40 years. And yes, I blame good old Ronald Reagan, but the rest of the folks all participated. And with these depressed wages, I don't see how these succeeding generations of young parents are going to be able to support their families. Then on top of that, there was a program that pointed out that if you're five years old today, in 15 years, of course, you're going to be 20. And if you're 65 today, in 15 years, you're going to be pushing 85. And you know that 85% of the women from the boomer generation who are earning 65 cents on the dollar to 75 cents on the dollar are going to be living in poverty. And that doesn't count how many, or doesn't address the issue of how many of us are going to be suffering from Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia, and that we're going to need care. And where's the money going to come from? And all of these are valid issues, and you certainly want the kids to be well-educated. And you certainly want to come down on the people who have been, you know, inexcusably greedy, you know, the Michael Milkins of the world. So, I leave this up to you, but I ask you to keep those things in consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Sir?
Yeah, my name's Conrad Wason, 5378 Sudley Road, West River, Maryland. This is not why I came here tonight, but given the opportunity, I don't know who screwed up the planet, you know, I don't know who's going to be taxed, but I guarantee you that when I have to oppose, I have to support this bill that opposes, you know, creating a tiered rate system of property income taxes. I don't know who's going to be paying, but I can guarantee you, everyone will be paying more taxes because it's all about getting more revenue, state and county government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed, and this public hearing on Resolution Number 1020 is now Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barron, I have a question for the administration on this one. I heard, one of the things you said was that the progressive tax, I think, would be for people who are making over $1 million a year. So, when the County Executive has talked about this proposal, I've heard him talk about the Poverty Amidst Plenty report a lot, where he talks about the increase in the number of households making over $200,000 a year in the county, and what an explosive growth that we've seen in that vis-à-vis other income categories and levels. So, I guess I just want to be clear about who we're talking about because Mr. Sinclair had kind of highlighted at the point of this. He said, you know, if somebody's at $1 million, he doesn't feel like that's a problem, they should be taxed more. But if it's under $500,000, he's not sure that he's on board with that. I guess I'm just curious, where is the administration, if this were to come in and you were to have that authority? Are we looking at only people who make over $1 million a year? Would that be the only group that we'd be targeting?
We don't have the authority yet, so we would have to look at the numbers and run the numbers. The intention would be to give working and middle-class county residents a tax break and shift the burden to those with the most. So, what I said was that a middle school teacher should not pay the same rate as a millionaire.
Got you.
The point was, right now, we have a flat tax, which means that it affects those who are on the lower income scale more than those at the top. The county, I believe, has, I think, the top 1% of our taxpayers is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.6 million annually.
That's their income?
That's their income.
Okay. So, those are the folks that you all would be looking at if you had this authority? Just the top 1%?
I can't say for sure. Again, we would have to run the numbers, but the intention, one, would be that this bill would give us the authority, it would enable us to do it. The County Executive cannot change tax rates without coming before this body. So, whatever plan is developed, you would have the opportunity to question, examine, crunch those numbers yourself. I'm sure Madam Auditor would have a good time doing that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to get the sense, I believe that the County Executive has repeatedly said this is authority that he would like from the state level, he would like them to give. And so, I've just been trying to get a sense of what the plan would be if he gets that. I don't think people typically ask for something if they don't have a plan of where they're going.
The plan would be to give as many county residents a break and shift the burden to those at the top.
Okay. And then in the budget that's going to come down soon, is there any intention to raise taxes?
There, you will have to wait and see. We are just starting to go through the budget, and you will see it. No decision has been made. I mean, frankly, it would be irresponsible for me to sit here today. Who knows? The coronavirus might come, and we might have a real emergency where we need revenue. We might have police and fire officials-esque, want to give them a raise to keep retention up. We might want to pay the back steps for the teachers. We have to look at all of that collectively. When the budget comes down, on May 1st, I believe, that's when we'll have the answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just want to tell a quick story to sort of illustrate a point here. Last year's budget, there were a number of amendments that failed, proposed cuts. One of those had to do with the Beverly Triton Nature Park out on the Mayo Peninsula. There was a $5 million line item in the capital budget for those park improvements, and I had an amendment proposing to shift $1 million from last year's fiscal budget to this year's fiscal budget. And in some of my comments, I had said, you know, say what you want about whether or not $5 million is the appropriate amount for this park. I don't think we can spend it in this fiscal year, and I don't think it would be a wise decision to appropriate the money and take the taxpayers' dollars at this time when I don't think we can even spend this money in the next fiscal year. Unfortunately, my amendment failed four to three, or three to four, I should say, and the money was appropriated in the budget. I went to the 60% design meeting for the Beverly Triton Nature Park a couple of weeks ago. So, we have not come even close to spending even a minor portion of the $5 million for construction. In fact, it's not even slated to start construction until the end of this year. And that's not to say anything about Wreckin' Parks, or DPW, or anybody else who's involved in those projects. They are moving forward, I believe, as fast as they can. I say it only to illustrate that there are cuts that can be made and shifts that can be made in the budget that will have a meaningful impact long before we look at new taxes and progressive taxes. So, I for one will be supporting this resolution, and I look forward to finding, you know, those types of inefficiencies in this year's budget.
May I respond?
Sure.
We fully support finding inefficiencies. And I would just reiterate this point again, there were not, all the amendments that were proposed in last year's budgets did not add up to a total enough to negate having to do some revenue increase.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be very clear. My vote this evening does in no way reflect how I support our public safety, or our teachers, or their salaries. My vote tonight will reflect the promises I made to my constituents at their door, and I hold that trust from my constituents very seriously.
Ms. Radveen.
I really did not anticipate coming here tonight to be talking about tax policy. I'm actually a little frustrated that that's where our conversation is going because, you know, this, you know, we don't even know whether these bills will pass in the General Assembly. Obviously, that's a long way before we would have any real concrete proposal at the county level. That said, progressive taxes are fair. I've lived long enough that in my younger years, I lived at the very, very bottom of the tax brackets. I lived in the lowest tax bracket. Thankfully, I've moved up sufficiently or significantly over time, although I won't say I'm anywhere near the $500,000 cutoff, yet. If my tax, or if my dollars were needed to support our community, I would be okay with contributing more because I'm now in a position that I earn more, and that is fair. To me, that is about fairness. Income inequality has increased dramatically in the last several decades. We are at income inequality levels that we haven't seen since around the time of the Great Depression, when, you know, we ushered in the era of FDR and dramatic increases in supporting people at the bottom of the income levels. Minimum wage, for example, which many people are still working at, doesn't remotely pay for a family's living expenses. It hasn't kept up with CPI, it hasn't kept up with inflation. It's been estimated that minimum wage would probably be somewhere between $20 and $30. And yet, here we are in 2020 arguing about $15 an hour. Progressive taxes are fair taxes. And to look at it any other way, when we still have over $1 billion, probably closer to $2 billion in construction backlog in the public schools, we still are not fully staffed, I think we need to be at least leaving options. We are not making decisions about raising taxes or lowering taxes in this debate tonight. We are far, far away from that. But the idea that we should be able to count more heavily, rely more heavily on the people that have been financially the most successful in this county, while giving the folks that are struggling financially a break, is enormously fair. And so, I cannot support this resolution.
So, with that, I would just add, I'm not prepared to talk tax policy either tonight. As I sit on the Legislative Committee at Mako, two of these bills left the Maryland Association of Counties with no position. I think the first public hearing...
The proper, sorry.
That's okay.
HB 1276, I believe, Mako supported.
Right. So, they haven't even had a public, they're in committee, they have a public hearing, I think, on the 5th?
HB 1276 was heard last week in Ways and Means. Thursday is the hearing for the House for HB 1494, and SB 1040 has not been set yet.
So, my point is, the public has the opportunity to testify at the Maryland General Assembly with all of these bills, and I would encourage them to do that if and when the opportunity, we, every county in the state is enabled or not to tax within brackets. We will have a very robust debate here in Anarundel County about that topic, and I look forward to that debate. I grew up in an area where at 64, all households received a tax decrease because they were no longer potentially involved in schools. We can't do that in Anarundel County. So, we can't do that in any county. We cannot give a tax, we have to tax at the flat rate, as we've been talking about. We don't get to tax retirees less, we don't get to tax fixed income less. So, this conversation is sort of strange to me tonight, and I think it's not the right time or the right place. But, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify one thing. We actually do have certain credits that we offer in the tax code for retirees, or veterans, or first responders. So, we do actually have ways that we tax folks in potential categories, if you will, a little bit differently than other people. So, I recognize that there's not a difference in brackets, and as I understand that this is not being proposed, to suggest that teachers would be taxed at one rate and lawyers would be taxed at another. I think it's about income. But I just wanted to clarify that we do actually have certain things in the tax code that allow for credits for different categories of workers.
And there's two bills that were introduced tonight the County Executive is bringing down to expand that for certain classes. So, generally, we support that.
Seeing no further comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1020.
I'm going to read it in for vote first.
Oh, thank you. Yes?
You're welcome. Resolution Number 1020, Resolution urging members of the General Assembly to oppose bills that would allow counties to create tiered rates for property and income taxes.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1020.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
No.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Resolution Number 1020 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 220 as amended.
Bill Number 220, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, Roads, and Rights of Way, Obstructions, Abandonment of Facilities.
This is a joint bill between the administration and Mr. Volkey. Would you like to introduce the bill?
Is it ready? Oh, yeah, I'm happy to. So, again, I won't rehash all the territory that we've covered before. The administration and I have worked on this bill. I believe that with this final amendment that we're proposing this evening, that we will get to a place where the utilities are supportive of the bill. So, I think that that's, it's a really positive example of some collaboration across the board, both within government and then with industry, that we've been able to reach a place where we can get a product that everybody's proud of.
The administration?
Sure. Pete Barron for the County Exec. Joining me at the table is Mr. Bakie and Mr. Phipps from the Department of Public Works, and Mr. Swain from the Office of Law. Yes, there are a number of issues where the councilmen and the administration agree. To give everybody a quick reminder, the councilman was working on a bill, the administration was working on a bill. Turns out, we were working to tackle the same issues we met. This bill addresses the concern... This bill addresses the concern of when the county is doing work in a right of way, and there are utilities, either buried or above ground, that are delaying our project, that we are able to get responsiveness from the utility companies. We are working pretty, we've worked, I think this is amendment that will be before you, Amendment Number 6. So, we've come forward with a couple of tweaks and changes. I'll discuss the amendment when it's before us, but just to reiterate, I would agree with Mr. Volkey that the amendment that is before us this evening should get the bill in a position that everybody is ready to move on it. With that...
Are there any questions from my colleagues? We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. Is anyone in the audience looking to speak on Bill Number 220 as amended? Ms. Johnson, please come forward.
Julie Johnson, P.O., about 6634 Annapolis, Maryland. I really don't have a lot of testimony to provide, but rather, a couple of questions. How much of this is tied up to 5G and tearing up, you know, the pavement and putting in these new things, you know, for self-driving vehicles and who knows what all else? Because that is going to be an extremely expensive operation. And I'm anticipating that somehow, hidden in the murky things and the fine print and stuff, somehow, that 5G stuff is in there, but I don't know. So, I hope some of you will enlighten me. Thank you, now.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 220 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 220 as amended.
Bill Number 220, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Roads and Rights of Way, Obstructions, Abandonment of Facilities.
I believe there is an amendment tonight. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
Amendment Number 6, this amendment clarifies an appropriately secured service drop that does not conflict with existing or new facilities is not considered to be abandoned by virtue of having been out of use for one year or more if the service drop can be put back into use upon the request of a customer.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I talk about the amendment, I just want to address Ms. Johnson's question about the 5G implementation. This is not dealing with 5G per se. This is actually dealing with much larger capital projects. For instance, when the county goes in and does a major stormwater management project, or does a sidewalk project, or builds a school, or anything for that matter, that's a large capital project, when we've run into issues where, in digging in the right-of-ways, the county discovers that there may be unmarked utilities, or utilities that are unaccounted for, this is covering that type of a situation. It also is dealing with abandoned facilities. So, for instance, Mr. Barron, I know, has some photos somewhere of some things along Pasadena Road, which is in my district, of these service drop-type situations where the utility carriers disconnect someone's service to their house, and then may leave the wires in a tangled, jumbled mess at the bottom of a pole, or, you know, they've come in and replaced utility poles and not done a nice job with it. So, this is a bill that deals with those things. It does not actually really deal with the 5G issue. As far as I'm aware, I think the gentleman at the table may be able to answer that better, but my understanding is this does not touch on that. As it deals with the amendment, this was an amendment that's been requested by the utility providers, which makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it hopefully does to the administration as well. My understanding is they're supportive of this, but I don't want to speak for Mr. Barron. Ultimately, the purpose of this is, if you're a Comcast customer, or a Verizon, or a BGE, I don't want to leave anybody else out, Broadstripe for that matter, too. If you had service and you elect to change your service to someone else, or you just disconnect and you say, "I'm going off the grid for a while," instead of the service provider having to come out and sort of pull up the whole line and get rid of it, and then when they come out later, if you decide you want to go back on to that provider and having to run a whole new line, this allows them to neatly and appropriately clean up those service drops, if you will, to ensure that that's still accessible to the provider. So, the purpose is that that would not be considered an abandoned facility. It's a little bit technical, but it's also very practical, and it makes sense, hence the reason that I'll be supporting it. I hope you do, too.
The administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Volkey, you did characterize it correctly. We are supportive. I want to appreciate sort of how this particular amendment came together. I think some language was proposed. We made some comments. Our comments are incorporated in the amendment, so we support.
Is there any other discussion from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 6.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 6 is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 220 as amended will be heard on March 16, 2020. Ms. Claggett mentioned earlier today how hard county council members work. We are also extremely intelligent when we leave office with all these different topics we cover. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 720.
Bill Number 720, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Other Zoning Districts, Private Golf Course Facilities.
Ms. Hare, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This is a, this is, I'll be pretty quick because we covered this at the work session, but this is essentially just covering a gap that exists in the code right now. Currently, golf courses are allowed in open space, but the facilities that go along with them are not. We do allow them in the residential districts where we allow the courses, and there are other similar sort of items that are allowed for parks and camps and things like that, similar facilities and those types of things. So, from my understanding, planning and zoning was supportive of this, and I believe the administration was okay with it as well.
The administration like to respond?
Pete Barron from the administration. Joining me at the table from planning and zoning is Ms. Saye, and from law, Mr. Swain. Once again, our position is characterized correctly. The administration is supportive. This is just common sense fix.
Is there any questions from the council for the sponsor? No? We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up on this bill. Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak on Bill Number 720? Seeing no movement from the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 720 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 720.
Bill Number 720, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Other Zoning Districts, Private Golf Course Facilities.
Seeing no other discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 720.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 720 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 320.
Resolution Number 320, Resolution approving the terms and conditions of the acquisition of real property consisting of approximately 37.50 acre, plus or minus acres, more or less known as 1127 Brakers Road in Odenton, Maryland, 21113, from Stachitas Investments LLC, utilizing funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
This is a resolution brought forward by the administration and Mr. Pruski. Would the administration like to kick off this conversation?
Would be happy to, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Shagnovich, Mr. Stewart from Public Schools, Mr. Burke from DPW, Mr. Swain from Office of Law, and to my left is Mr. Beecham from Budget. I would, we discussed this at the work session, but Resolution 320 is a critical bill to acquire some very much-needed land in West County. So, this resolution approves the acquisition of the Brakers Road property using funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project. This land allows the county to address the need for additional school capacity in the area. This need is particularly acute due to the removal of an age restriction on a particular development. That rapid development in the area and the failure of the county to adequately plan in the past has led to a gap in school capacity. The Board of Education, in collaboration with Wreckin Parks, evaluated potential uses of the property. It was determined that both educational and recreational uses could occur as depicted on the feasibility concept plan. With existing county property to the north and adjacent to the existing WBNA trail, the property acquisition would allow a large contiguous property for public use. The Board of Education is in need of an elementary school that can support approximately 600 kids, or youngsters, Mr. Shagnovich, in this rapidly growing part of the county. This site will support the school needs as well as recreational uses. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not everyone attended the work session, so I just wanted to summarize a couple of items. I know we have some new folks in the crowd. This is my district. I fully support it. I wanted to remind everybody at the work session, if you haven't followed the Board of Education meetings recently, you would understand the overcrowding that's occurring, particularly in the Watch Apple quarter. And Mr. Barron made a good point about some of the things that unfortunately, either this council, or even my preceding council, my term, things that were legacy that we're having to deal with in our area. So, I fully support this, and I want to make a couple of items clear because we did get a couple of questions about this property. First of all, the bike path is not going away. A lot of people have said, because you're buying property next to a bike path, there's a whole feasibility process that the school system has to do, and there's public input for that, so nothing's been decided. The second piece, which I think some people reiterated, that there's a pool going on this site. There's no pool planned on this site right now. If you look at any elementary or middle school, there's fields. The last I checked, they need a place for Field Day and other things, so this assumption that this is being bought for other purposes. I will invite you anytime to visit Piney Orchard, Watch Apple, and Forest Seasons that are currently overcrowded, and you can walk with me into the cafeterias, and you could ask those parents that same question. So, I kind of take offense to that by some of the assertions that are being made about that. This property is for a school. And again, your vote will be public, like mine, and hope you can explain to those residents in terms of the overcrowding and the issues. And also, watch some of the school board meetings. So, if we're certainly interested in state issues, I think we should be watching Board of Education issues because we fund their budget. So, I think that's also important from that end. So, I just want to make sure that everybody is involved and understand, you know, what we're trying to do here. And Mr. Barron did reiterate, this is something that we, in particular, kind of have to deal with now in that area. Fort Meade has expanded, we're going to have a presentation in April where the Colonel is going to give us an update on how many more people are coming. So, certainly, this school, among other things, is going to be impacted. So, I just want to make sure that the facts are clear and people understand kind of what we're doing, and I appreciate the questions because that's what our body's supposed to do, is answer those questions about the bike path, what's the purpose, what are we trying to do, and ultimately, getting back to the overcrowding that's occurring in those areas. We can give you the numbers, but I actually encourage you to go visit those schools, you know, so you have that. But, thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I do plan on supporting this resolution. I agree, we need the school. The overcrowding is serious. I think we heard during the work session that the school needs about the front 10 acres, and this is roughly a 37-acre property or so. It is, to my understanding, pretty heavily wooded. So, my only request, or my hope, is that any of these recreational facilities or things like that, that may go on the back 26, to the extent that we can incorporate as much passive recreation and not have to, you know, cut down or clear-cut the back 26 acres and be a leader in that, since that's what we had sort of talked about and whatnot during the Forest Conservation Act and whatever, that's, that would be all. But, I am happy to support the resolution, and I am excited for this to be a new school location.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to see that we're able to use this money in the Advanced Land Acquisition Fund. I think it just proves that that fund was a good idea, and I hope that we continue funding it in the future. I know that was something that in the last budget, we talked about, and there were some folks who indicated that we no longer needed that, or it wasn't serving purposes, but I think this proves that it is really a good purpose, and it's there, and it's helpful. So, I hope that's in the next budget. The other thing I was going to ask is, Mr. Swain, I don't know if you know about this or not, I hate to put you on the spot, but there was a statement that this was approved, and then there was a removal of the age restriction, and that's what's created this really acute need for a school in this area. The reason I ask that is because I know of a number of other projects that may be coming down the line, that are currently being pitched as age-restricted type developments. And one of the concerns I have in our code is that down the road, there can be a removal of that age restriction. So, if you could give me any background on this particular situation and how that was removed, that would be helpful, because I think that would be interesting for the public to know.
Well, there is a process in the code. Ray Swain from the Office of Law, there is a process in the code for lifting those age restrictions principally when schools are open. So, if to lift an age restriction on a piece of property, you would have to pass all the applicable APF tests. That's the way it's set up now, and that's what happened with this project. Any future project that was age-restricted could retest following the process in the code and lift the age restriction.
And is the process in the code that you meet all the APF, but then also that you get all the landowners to agree? I think all the people who are in the project or something? Is that required?
I believe so. It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Okay, that's fair.
But, I think that is the process.
I guess my question would be, how was it that the schools were open when this was approved, and then all of a sudden, now the schools are way over capacity in this area, and somehow, we've approved this, but we've created this acute need? If you know.
I'd still function.
There's nobody from planning and zoning here, so you're the closest I've got.
It's truly a function of the school chart.
Okay. And does anybody from the schools, Mr. Shagnovich, do you know?
Yes, sir. Alec Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer. So, the APF provision at that time was essentially a binary provision. So, if the school was open by zero or one seats, an unlimited amount of units could be flipped, so we...
So, is this prior to the change to 95% capacity?
Correct. It predates what we today know as the standing APF. So, this was under a prior provision that essentially allowed for a larger-scale conversion than would be permissible under today's statute as it exists.
Okay. Appreciate that. And the only other question I would ask you, and I've asked this before, but I know that the school, the school board, not you per se, but the school board, sometimes goes through and does redistricting. Is there any plan to look at the system a little more holistically when it comes to redistricting in an effort to alleviate some of the extreme overcrowding that Councilman Pruski mentioned in his district that they're experiencing, knowing that there's capacity in other schools more toward the eastern part of the county? I'm just curious if the schools, school board is looking at that or the Board of Ed at all?
Well, I would dare be reluctant to speak for the Board of Ed, because I don't represent them. However, so, we do have some large capital projects on the horizon, namely, in the Old Mill District that will essentially force a very large redistricting endeavor that will essentially conjoin about, you know, two-thirds of the county landmass from North County all the way down to essentially Route 50, and then going east and west from there. Because we'll have to recreate boundaries for the new Old Mill West School.
Got you.
And then, recraft boundaries for Old Mill East, just given their geographical proximity in the core of the county. It will pull in redistricting from all four sides of it in all likelihood, and we are currently under design for the Old Mill West School already, so we're probably not very far off of Phase 1 of a series of very large-scale redistricting endeavors.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm excited to see this passed today. I'm hoping it's a unanimous vote. We are certainly in need of schools, and we're, as a parent of three very active children and who have made their home here in Anarundel County, and we are also in need of shoring up our recreation and park facilities. So, this is sort of, we get a lot for our $1 million. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 320.
Yes, we have to have a public hearing.
My apologies. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I actually have someone signed up even. Will the, I'm going to have to, Mr. Scott, something with a W. I'm at the mercy of your penmanship. Scott, something with a W. I'm at the mercy of your penmanship. You have, state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Sure. Good evening, council. My name is Scott Weigel. So that's how you say that one. I'm at 1320 Bramble Circle in Odenton, so I'm actually in the community that was recently rezoned. So I came out tonight actually to speak in favor of 320, so I think everyone's kind of already hit the points that I wanted to go over. But since I'm here, one of the points that I also wanted to call out was that we're extremely excited because if this was to pass, our school assignment is Piney Orchard, which relies on Patuxent Road, which we know is an extremely dangerous two-way road that frequently floods. And with the increased amount of traffic that this would alleviate, we're certainly looking forward to that. Just for an FYI for the community, my street has 16 homes, or sorry, 11 homes, and 16 children would be affected by this on that little tiny street right there. So just wanted to say thank you in advance. Looking forward to passing as well.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Resolution Number 320? This is your opportunity. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Scott's neighbor, and I have a, oh, Mark, M-A-R-K, Di Maria, D-I, capital M, A-R-I-A, and I am at 1316 Bramble Circle, Odenton, Maryland. I have a seven-month-old, so having a school this close to our home would be absolutely awesome, and I'm thinking about the future. So I know he won't be attending for a number of years, but hopefully the school will be done before then. And I do hope this is unanimous as well. Super excited to be living in Anarundel County. I moved from Virginia, so to see this kind of support for the community is very reassuring that I made the right move. So I hope you all definitely say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. If I were one of the parents in an overcrowded school, I would be here rabidly saying, "We've got to have more space." But I'm old, and I have a different point of view with respect to the fact that over the decades, the developers come before the council and say, "Oh, we desperately need your help. We've got to change the zoning. We've got to create facilities so we can build more homes for more schools," and so on and so forth. And so what happens is the taxpayers get slammed with a lot of really major taxes to create adequate facilities. And so the taxpayers take on all the financial risk, and the developers and, you know, the people that are involved in that process get all the benefits, or at least a large part of the financial benefits. So I would ask that when you look at this, here you have a situation in this specific case where somebody had an age-restricted environment or development. Well, then, when they get the opportunity, well, let's just drop that and change to something different. And who benefits from that helpful change in the legislation? It's not the taxpayers, you know, because they get slammed with the additional cost of building a school. And again, I'm a retired teacher. You know I support those kinds of things. But I ask you, as responsible representatives, to be aware that the taxpayers are aware that county councils, year after year and decade after decade, seem to be helping out the desperately needy, the financially, you know, restricted and limited developers and builders and so on, because after all, they need the help. And again, I realize that Fort Meade is nearby, and we certainly want to support them.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The public hearing on Resolution Number 320 is now closed. Now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 320.
Resolution Number 320, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Property Consisting of Approximately 37.5 plus or minus acres, more or less, known as 1127 Brakers Road in Odenton, Maryland, 21113, from Statitas Investments, LLC, utilizing funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Barron, seeing none from the council, did you have any last words?
Please vote for this.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 320.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 320 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 420.
Resolution Number 420, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-owned Property Near Furnace Ranch Road in Glenbernie, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Thank you. This is being brought forward today by Mr. Barron, and I did sign on as a co-sponsor, but I'll let the administration take the lead on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Romans and Mr. Walker from Central Services, Mr. Beecham from Budget, and Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. We discussed this funny little parcel at the work session. Resolution 420 declares the property on Furnace Ranch Road as surplus property. The property is located in Glenbernie, and it is comprised of one parcel at the intersection of Furnace Branch and Crane Highway. The property was transferred to the county in, by a deed dated January 8, 1976. The initial request for this property was from the adjacent property owner at 7102 Glenbernie. So, or sorry, 7102 Ritchie Highway Glenbernie. I think you all know where I'm at. You should have a map in your packet. You'll notice that it is a funny little parcel. It is not buildable by itself. This would allow the owner of the adjacent parcel to package them together and hopefully do a little revitalization in a part of the county that definitely needs it. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions and hope you will support this amendment, or this resolution. It's been a long year.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up regarding this. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 420? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 420 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 420.
Resolution Number 420, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-owned Property Near Furnace Ranch Road in Glenbernie, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 420. Oh, I just said that. Please call the roll on Resolution Number 420.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 420 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 520.
Resolution Number 520, Resolution Approving the Appointments of Members to the Severn River Commission.
This is a resolution brought forward by the county executive. Ms. Schultz?
Good evening. Resolution 520 appoints Lynn Dowling Rockenbaugh, Clinton Lee Meadows, and Keith Hanson to serve on the Severn River Commission. Ms. Dowling Rockenbaugh is a Master Watershed Steward and is a member of the Severn River Association. She will serve until January 31 of 2023. Mr. Meadows is a Master Watershed Steward and is active member of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Severn River Association. He will serve until January 31 of 2022. And Mr. Hanson is an active volunteer in the community as a Maryland Master Naturalist, Tree Baltimore Weed Warrior, Greenhouse Worker with Chesapeake Natives, and is in Class 12 of the Anarundel Watershed Stewards Academy. He will serve until January 31 of 2023. You should have the resumes in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this resolution. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 520 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 520.
Resolution Number 520, Resolution Approving the Appointments of Members to the Severn River Commission.
Last chance for discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Number 5, Resolution Number 520.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 520 is adopted.
Madam Secretary? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 620.
Resolution Number 620, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members of the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
This came to us by the administration. Ms. Schultz?
Again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office with Ms. Christine Nederer from the Office of Law. Resolution 620 reappoints Sergeant Michael Shire and Robert Stoll as classified members to the Pension Oversight Commission. Mr. Shire is a sergeant for the police department, and Mr. Stoll is a wastewater tech for DPW, and is an active APSME 582 member. You should have their resumes in front of you.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up on this legislation. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 620 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 620.
Resolution Number 620, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members of the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 620.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 620 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 720.
Resolution Number 720, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Residents of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
This resolution was brought forward again by the county administration, Kaylee Schultz.
Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office and Christine Nederer from the Office of Law. Resolution 720 appoints Ed Goslin and Mark Humphries to the Pension Oversight Commission. Mr. Goslin is a partner for Chesapeake Real Estate Group. He was a past chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Anarundel Health System, where he served as the HH AAS Investment Committee, which had governance oversight for its pension along with finance and strategic planning committees. Mr. Humphries is the owner of Sentinel Financial Planning, LLC. He has a strong background working with benefit plans. They will both serve until January 31 of 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have no one signed up to speak on this resolution. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 720 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 720.
Resolution Number 720, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Residents of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
Excuse me, Mr. Volkey, did you have?
Ready to vote.
Oh, gotcha. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 720.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 720 is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until March 16, 2020.